Good evening, welcome to the City of Green Council meeting for December 11th, 2018. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands on a foundation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Babbitt.
Here.
Mr. Dyer.
Here.
Mr. Humphrey.
Here.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Here.
Mr. Spate.
Here.
Mr. Yergin.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here. First item on our agenda is council study session. We have before us two items. The first is the approval of the November 27, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of the November 27, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the November 2018 financial statements subject to audit.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of the November 2018 financial statements subject to audit. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the public report. Public report is an opportunity for individuals from the community to come and appear before council to spend three minutes to discuss things that they have on their mind. We have two individuals who have signed in this evening. The first is Tammy Daly. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Tammy Daly. I live at 1779 King Drive. I just wanted to address before you guys start spending that I think there's $7 million left of the NEXIS fund. If you could please reach out to the community and to those that are in the blast zone and ask them for some feedback. Can you make a database of those people that are in the line? Can you reach out to them and ask them for their feedback? Can you have meetings with them? Can you invite them to be on a committee to give you feedback on how to spend that money? You know, they may say that we do want you to spend all of the money on the firehouse. But I've heard from other ones that they have some other ideas that they would like to be considered. I understand that the firehouse definitely needs to be built to reduce the runtime. I don't think that's a question at all. Does the city have other funding to pay for the firehouse? Can the city come up with a way to balance maybe some of the NEXIS money with some of the general fund money? But just sitting and talking, because I have sat and talked with these people who are still scared and still a lot of them, if you talk to them, they still are on the verge of tears. And even when the pipeline is covered with grass, the ones that are within those couple hundred feet, they live in fear every day. And those people have not had an opportunity to negotiate and get any sort of funding from NEXIS. So can those, just some ideas thrown out, and I'm not in the blast zone myself, but I have talked to others. You know, one man within 90 feet said there's 10 houses that are within, right there within that 100 feet, and the man said, "Please buy me out. I live within 90 feet and I haven't had any negotiations with NEXIS." Can those within the couple, can they be bought out? Can you create some buffer zones like you're trying to create at the baseball field? Can you create some of those buffer zones for the people with some of that money? Can you offer some grants for them to reduce some of their, because their houses were reduced, can you offer them grants to cover that money? One, when Mr. Dyer had his meeting last night, one couple, elderly couples came and came up with an idea that we hadn't even thought about till we started brainstorming. They live in a dead end street and they can't get out if something were to happen, nor can the fire department get to them if something happened. And they said, you know, "Can you create an access road for us to have another way out?" And I said, "Well, that would be awful. You know, that's hard because you have to buy property." And they said, "No, we already looked at the map. The City of Green owns the property behind us and they, in their mind, think that they have formulated an access plan, but they just need to be asked. They need to be talked to." One man said, "You know, I'd rather you just sit on the money." There's ideas out there and I think the overall feeling of the residents is that they haven't been asked and they haven't been part of the process and they would like to be part of the process. So I ask before you start spending the bulk of the money, $5 million, on the firehouse, that you reach out to these people and ask them if they can help you make these decisions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Daly. And we did discuss this item at the committee meetings this evening. There is going to be an opportunity for public comment. We're not taking any action on that tonight and so there will be adequate time for the public to weigh in on that. So thank you for your suggestions. All right, the next individual who signed in this evening and the final individual who signed in this evening is Des Worthheimer.
Good evening, Des Worthheimer, 130 East Turkeyfoot Lake Road. I think the spending of the NEXIS money for safety services would be a fantastic use. I work in the oil and gas industry and have now close to 14 years. And unfortunately, there's been a tremendous amount of fear mongering with the residents that live close by. We've begged and pleaded and preached and screamed and yelled and explained about the City of Green and the storage field and how many pipelines are here. The residents that live there, even though it's a 36-inch line, the residents that live at Spring Hill, Kings Ridge, Alderwood Hills, Meadowwood, Solar Estates, Camelot, over by the high school, all those areas have 12, 14, 16, 18, 20-inch lines that run at 1,000 PSI pressures, all of them. There's no question about that. There are 400 wells in the City of Green alone and they've all been here for more than 20 years. Three-fourths of them are storage wells with Dominion. And so this idea of blast zones and fear mongering, I get it, but the reality isn't that. There are 2 million miles of pipeline in this country that the number of accidents is not even a quarter of a percent. Now, one accident, of course, is bad, but I think we need to move away from all of the fear and the intrepidation and use the money and for all of the residents. To take this money and to use it for a small group of residents wouldn't be reasonable, fair, or most likely legal. A pipeline deal I worked on in Pennsylvania, a town decided to buy a property from somebody close to the pipeline because he was friends of the mayor. The ACLU stepped in and sued for a civil rights violation for legal enrichment using the money to benefit one resident while not using money to benefit others. So the idea or even suggestion of buying properties, never going to happen. I mean, it's literally never going to happen. So let's concentrate on using the money for all the residents to benefit and hopefully the pipeline, you know, it goes away and everybody moves on. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Worthheimer. The next item on our agenda is the reading of correspondence.
Email from Brian Daniels regarding tobacco retailers, Civil Service Commission October Minutes, and email from Gary McGee regarding community internet speed and connectivity survey, and an email from Tammy Daly regarding the use of NEXIS funds. And that's it.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the reading in of new legislation.
First reading resolution 2018 R-93, a resolution modifying appropriations within certain funds in order to provide sufficient funding and declaring an emergency.
And that is referred to the Finance Committee, which I chair. The administration has requested first reading passage on this. We did have an opportunity to discuss at the evening. The memorandum total on Exhibit A of this legislation is $56,570. The first is $50,000 for Rain Tree Golf Course. Essentially what we're doing is setting up a line of credit for the operator until they generate income. That money will then be paid back, but they do need an initial line in order to start their operations, that they'll be operating on behalf of the City of Green. And the second amount is for $6,570 and that is for the Kleckner Baseball Field Project. There was a change order on that so that we can get this field operational in the spring. They will be sodding this field and so that led to the additional expense and so this modified appropriation will take care of that. Because the administration has requested first reading passage and the committee agreed at this time, I would move to bypass committee deliberations on 2018 R-93.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to bypass committee deliberations on 2018 R-93. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I move to bypass the three reading rule on 2018 R-93.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to bypass the three reading rule on 2018 R-93. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to adopt 2018 R-93.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt 2018 R-93. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Humphrey.
Yes.
Mr. Yergin.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mrs. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Mr. Spate.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 R-93 adopted 7-0. First reading resolution 2018 R-94, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Green and the Legal Defender's Office of Summit County, Ohio, Inc., and declaring an emergency.
That'll be referred to the Intergovernmental and Utilities Committee.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dyer.
I know there hasn't been a request from the administration to do first reading passage on this, but it is simply a renewal of our agreement with the Summit County public defender's office. There's no change in the amount of money that's being produced here and our current one would run out at the end of this year. Might I, in a sense it's in my committee, I was wondering if my committee would object to moving this on first reading passage so we can have this in place for the beginning of next year prior, so we're not extending old agreements beyond their term.
I have no objection.
Is there any objection to that?
No objection.
Mr. Young, do you have an objection to that?
I don't have any objection. I wish we had discussed it in committee, but it seems pretty standard, so I can be agreeable for that.
Okay. All right. Then I move to bypass the three reading rule on 2018 R-94.
First of all, committee deliberations moved.
Bypass committee deliberations on 2018 R-94.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to bypass the committee deliberations on 2018 R-94. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to bypass the three reading rule on 2018 R-94.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to bypass the three reading rule on 2018 R-94. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adopt 2018 R-94.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt 2018 R-94. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Mr. Spate.
Yes.
Mr. Yergin.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mrs. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 R-94 adopted 7-0. First reading resolution 2018 R-95, a resolution authorizing the City of Green to enter into a contract with EMHNT, Inc., for professional engineering services for a three-year term commencing December 1st, 2018, and declaring an emergency.
That'll be referred to the Transportation, Connectivity, and Stormwater Committee.
First reading 2018 R-96, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the county of Summit for concrete road repairs, including miscellaneous concrete work located in the City of Green and declaring an emergency.
That will be referred to the Transportation, Connectivity, and Stormwater Committee.
First reading resolution 2018 R-97, a resolution authorizing the City of Green to enter into a contract with USIC Locating Services LLC for professional services for a one-year annually reoccurring term commencing February 13th, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
That'll be referred to the Intergovernmental and Utilities Committee. The next item on our agenda is the report of council committees. We did hold a finance committee this evening, which I chair myself. Mr. Yergin and Mrs. Babbitt were present. We did have several items of legislative business. The first was a third reading of 2018 R-86. This is a resolution approving and adopting the 2019 annual operating appropriation for the general fund and all other funds for the City of Green and declaring an emergency. Of course, we did have a work session on this last Tuesday where we met here in council chambers to hammer out this budget. I do want to applaud the administration for getting us this budget. I know that Mr. Schmidt and his team and all the administrative directors have to put in a great deal of work in order to get this budget before us every year and so I do appreciate all of their effort and for all of the effort of the members of council to work their way through this budget, which has quite a lot of detail. This is the third reading. We have discussed it and so at this time I move to adopt 2018 R-86.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt 2018 R-86. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Humphrey.
Yes.
Mr. Yergin.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mrs. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Mr. Spate.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 R-86 adopted 7-0.
The next item we had in committee this evening was a third reading of 2018 R-87. This is a resolution approving and adopting the 2019 annual capital appropriations for the City of Green and declaring an emergency. Again, we discussed this at our work session last Tuesday. Mr. Schmidt spoke on it tonight. We did discuss it in committee. The administration has requested that we take time on this piece of legislation because we'll see where we come in with our revenue between now and the end of the year and we believe that, we're hoping that we can add some additional road projects into the CIP between now and when we vote on it at our first meeting, the second Tuesday of January. And so the committee agreed to request time and without objection, time will be granted. The third piece of legislation we had in committee this evening was one that we just adopted on first reading and that's 2018 R-93. We had no items of older new business and the Finance Committee was adjourned. The next committee to report this evening is Environment and Parks chaired by Mr. Spate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself, Mrs. Babbitt, and Mr. Dyer were here. We did not have any items of legislative business. No newer old business came before our committee, therefore we did not meet.
Thank you, Mr. Spate. The next committee to report this evening is Public Safety chaired by Mrs. Babbitt.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee met today. Mr. Shaughnessy, Mr. Humphrey, and I were all present. We received the Summit County Sheriff's October Activity Report, the Green Fire October Activity Report, and the NEXIS Settlement Enforcement and Safety Committee Report from Mr. Yergin. We had no legislative or other business and we were adjourned at 5:38.
Thank you, Mrs. Babbitt. The next committee to report this evening is Planning, Community, and Economic Development chaired by Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet. All members were present, myself, Mr. Spate, and Mr. Yergin. We had one item of legislation and this is a third reading item, 2018 R-90, a resolution authorizing the City of Green to enter into an agreement with Summit County for the Intergovernmental Memorandum of Understanding for Job Creation and Retention and Tax Revenue Sharing and Declaring an Emergency. This was discussed in third reading and as I just mentioned, excuse me, this was discussed in committee and this is third reading. So at this time I make a motion to adopt 2018 R-90.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt 2018 R-90. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Spate.
Yes.
Mr. Yergin.
Yes.
Mrs. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey.
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 R-90 adopted 7-0.
Very good. There was no other business in our committee, but I will mention that we have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting next Wednesday, December 19th, at 6:30, right here in City Hall, or I guess council chambers would be the term, and we were adjourned at 5:40.
Thank you, Mr. Young. The next committee to report this evening is Rules and Personnel chaired by Mr. Shaughnessy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself, Mr. Humphrey, and Mr. Young were present. We did meet. We had one item to discuss. Council is going to appoint to the Design and Review Board Jeff Noble and to the Civil Service Commission, Clark Chip Westfall. We are very grateful for their interest and willingness to serve in these positions and we would like to thank all those who applied. Additionally, the mayor spoke about his appointments and I would like to give it back to the mayor and let him introduce his appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. All three of mine that require council confirmation are reappointments and so on the board of zoning appeals, I am reappointing James Mercer for a five-year term. On Planning and Zoning Commission, I am reappointing Robert Shorter for a five-year term. And on the Historic Preservation Commission, I am reappointing James Schweickert to another five-year term. Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy.
Thank you. We had no additional old or new business and we adjourned at 5:42.
So, yeah, so before we adjourn, Mr. Shaughnessy, I think that we need to have a motion both on the council appointments and then on the mayor's appointments.
Okay.
So if you just want to make two separate motions, then that'll be fine.
I move to appoint both Jeff Noble to the Design Review Board and Clark Chip Westfall to the Civil Service Commission.
Second, I have a motion and a second to make the council appointments to the two committees that Mr. Shaughnessy just mentioned. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I motion that we approve and appoint the choices of the mayor, James Mercer to Board of Zoning Appeals, Robert Shorter to Plan and Zoning Commission, and James Schweickert to the Historic Preservation Commission at this time.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And having no new, old, or new business, we did adjourn at 5:42.
All right, that was a soft close and a hard close, so that's good. All right, the next committee to report this evening is Transportation, Connectivity, and Stormwater chaired by Mr. Yergin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation, Connectivity, and Stormwater Committee did meet. Myself, Mr. Dyer, and Mr. Spate were present. We had one item of legislation before us. It is on second reading, but the administration has asked for second reading passage. It is 2018 R-92, a resolution authorizing the City of Green to enter into a contract with Ports Petroleum Company, Inc., to supply fuel to the city without competitive bidding and declaring an emergency. Ms. Waxcar spoke to this issue and explained that this is for a supplier to provide fuel to storage tanks at fire station number one in the south annex and the parks garage, which routinely purchase unleaded and diesel fuel. We have an ongoing relationship that's historic with Ports Petroleum and they have proven themselves to be a desirable supplier and Ms. Car explained that the administration would like to renew that contract. Because it's the end of the year, she's asked for second reading passage and with that in view, I would move to bypass the three reading rule.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to bypass the three reading rule on 2018 R-92. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I move to adopt 2018 R-92.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt 2018 R-92. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Yergin.
Yes.
Mr. Spate.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mrs. Babbitt, yes. Mr. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey.
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 R-92 adopted 7-0.
Also during committee deliberations, we heard from Mr. Pickett, who informed us that the Corporate Woods Parkway Roundabout is tantalizingly close to completion. However, due to weather delays, it probably will not be able to be completed until warmer weather. We also heard a report from Ms. Waxcar, who indicated that our snowplow condition is good and we have plenty of salt for the winter and that was part of her terrific planning and foresight because she foresaw that the price of salt was going to spike and asked the mayor to make a strategic purchase in the summer in anticipation of that. There was no other newer old business before us and the committee adjourned at 5:51.
Thank you, Mr. Yergin. The next committee to report this evening is Intergovernmental and Utilities chaired by Mr. Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a third reading of 2018 R-91 as amended, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Aqua Ohio and declaring an emergency. We held a public hearing on this two weeks ago. Basically what this is going to do is reduce the amount that Aqua Ohio charges green residents for water. According to the exhibit here, at the end of the five-year, at the end of the next five-year rate period, rates will be 6.7% less than originally negotiated, which would be a total savings of about $95 for the average retail user. So again, this is going to reduce the payments for residents on water due to changes in tax structure and other things. So I would move that we adopt 2018 R-91 as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt 2018 R-91 as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mrs. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey.
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Mr. Spate.
Yes.
Mr. Yergin.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 R-91 adopted 7-0.
There were no other items of legislative business. However, I would, since we are not meeting again until the beginning of the year, I did want to remind everybody that there are programs for folks who need help with their heating bills over the winter. The major one, of course, is the HEEP program. It's federally funded. Just wanted to remind everybody to take advantage of these programs if necessary because we want to make sure that everybody's safe and warm during the holiday season and through the winter. So I would urge everyone to contact their utility and make sure that they can qualify and take advantage of these programs so that they can remain safe through the winter. And that's, we were adjourned at 5:53.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dyer.
Excuse me, President Humphrey, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Chris.
Going back to 2018 R-92, it appears that Exhibit A that was downloaded was not the right exhibit for that. Ms. Car will be bringing over the correct exhibit, which is based on State of Ohio contract RS 900 619 for fuels so that she'll have that in the right exhibit can get put in.
Okay, very good.
It's just the online matter. Councilman Yergin had the correct contract earlier, but we noticed that it wasn't right on both the council meeting and the committee meeting.
All right, thank you. So we'll need to make sure that that's attached to the legislation that gets signed by myself and the mayor.
Yes, thank you. Sorry.
No, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
Bill, is this the correct one? Can you tell from looking at this? No? Yes?
We'll get it after the meeting. I think we'll be able to figure it out. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, the other thing that we had this evening in committee, under Rule 3.2 of the council rules, I determined that we needed to have another council committee that I'm calling the Charter Amendment Implementation Committee. Of course, we had a charter amendment that was passed by the citizens of Green by 26 votes and as a result of that, we need to begin implementation of the people's will on that. Even though it was a close vote, it was a vote that came out in favor of those who Even though it was a close vote, it was a vote that came out in favor of those who favored the charter amendment, and so it's the duty of council to make sure as best we can we carry that into completion to carry out the will of the voters. One of the problems associated with this, though, is the number and the amount of uncertainty there is in the charter amendment, and that just goes back to how it was drafted, when it was drafted. It looks like it was drafted very quickly. Some of it is typewritten, some of it is handwritten. It's not very clear in terms of all of the requirements. And so in order for us to be able to get this matter before the voters next November, and it sounds like we would have a lot of time to do that, if individuals are going to run for the position of law director, they have to have their petitions in by February sixth. And so I have asked Mr. Juergen to chair this committee, Mrs. Babbitt to serve as the vice chair, and Mr. Shaughnessy has agreed also to serve on this committee. And I've just tasked them with trying to outline what council can outline in terms of what this position is going to look like. One of the things that was not covered in the charter amendment is whether the law director was going to be part-time or full-time. If it's part-time, how many hours were going to be expected? Is the law director going to get paid a salary? Are they going to be paid on an hourly basis? Are they going to be paid on a by-project basis? None of that was covered in the charter amendment. You know, there's probably a lot of other things that are going to have to be hammered out that this council committee may not be able to be addressed. There's something as basic as how many signatures does it take in order to get this matter before the voters? How many signatures does it take for someone to run for law director? If you look in our charter, and our charter is our constitution for the city, it takes fifty signatures for someone to run for a ward council. It takes seventy-five signatures for someone to run for an at-large council seat. It takes a hundred and fifty signatures for someone to run for mayor. Now, all of those positions that are elected positions are specifically outlined in our charter. I don't think that it's up to council to speculate on that. I don't think it's up to this committee to speculate on that. But I think that it's a problem that's going to be, have to be hammered out, and it'll probably ultimately have to be hammered out in the courts to determine what is going to govern. Specifically, if your charter says for every elected office, here's how many signatures it's going to take. I don't think council can just determine whether it's fifty-five, seventy-five, or a hundred and fifty. This is an issue that is going to have to be determined, and the law director's looking into this. And Mr. Chris, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, or just smile at me.
Just smile and hopefully have some good answers or some answers for you by Monday.
All right, very good. And so this committee will be tasked to try to put some outlines on things that were not really part of the charter amendment to hopefully clean this up as best as possible. It may be a little messy the first time in implementation, and hopefully as we move on, we can get it clarified and certainly as the Charter Review Commission is coming online this next year in two thousand and nineteen, perhaps they can also work to clarify some of these issues so that there's clarity going forward. So they will serve on that committee, and that will appear on the next agenda for city council moving forward. And so the next item we have on our agenda is the mayor's report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items. We mentioned the roundabout at Corporate and Corporatewood Circle, or more known as the one in front of Giant Eagle. That work has been suspended because of the sequence of construction would put us laying down asphalt in January, which probably can't happen. So though, as was mentioned, that'll continue in the spring. But I did want to talk about Pickle Road Roundabout, which was completed on November twenty-third. And if you haven't had a chance to ride that one, it seems to work very well. One of our concerns was getting that lighting turned on, and that happened yesterday. So now that's lit at night, and I think it'll make it very safe and a very good way to move through that corridor. Let's see. Then a couple of events I attended. First off, on Wednesday, November twenty-eighth, I attended a leadership Akron event in Akron at Akron Children's Hospital. We were touring and celebrating the Considine Building addition. And I have to tell you what a great children's hospital we have in Akron, Ohio. It truly is special, the services that are provided on that campus. And so congratulations to the team there and congratulations to the new president and CEO, Grace Wilkolczek. And she did attend the event and speak to the group. And then on Thursday, November twenty-ninth, I assisted in packing bags for Blessings in a Backpack. If anybody's interested in doing that, our next packing will be on Thursday, December twentieth, and feel free to contact my office, and we can get you the right time and place. Also on Thursday, November twenty-ninth, was a Drug Task Force. Our Education Committee had a meeting that evening. And then on Friday, November thirtieth, Green Chamber, their Friday Forum Event, I attended. Bob McKee and Julie McMahon were there to discuss the Green Schools Foundation and what they do for our community. And then on Saturday, December first, was Christmas in Central Park. It was well-attended, even though it was quite a rainy day. I want to thank Elena Starr and the eighth-grade choir. Sixty-five of our students sang at the event, sang Christmas carols, and Santa arrived on a fire truck. Thanks to Kinder Care and Girl Scout Troop nine oh one oh nine, who helped with the crafts. The Girl Scout Troop also put together goodie bags for the event, and Mensch's Restaurant provided cookies and hot chocolate. And then on Monday, December third, I met with Ren Camacho, the new president and CEO of Akron Canton Airport. We had a good discussion about economic development and the role of the airport in our local economy. And then on Tuesday, December fourth, I went to Pebble Creek and presented a proclamation for their thirtieth anniversary of the facility. That evening, we also had a Drug Task Force meeting. And then on Wednesday, December fifth, our Green Community Leadership Initiative had their closing retreat. This was the inaugural group of sixteen people who attended. We had lots of good feedback from the event, and three members who were part of that leadership group have already asked to serve on boards and have been appointed to boards and commissions in the City of Greene. So I think it's a very successful program. On Thursday, December sixth, was a senior lunch that Greene hosts annually. That was at Guy's Party Center. There was three hundred and fifteen attendance, and Green High School Choir, under the direction of Julie Pickering, sang for the festivities. Okay, and then on Monday, December tenth, yesterday, I attended a Cleveland Clinic Akron General Community Advisory Committee in Akron, and the discussion was on infant mortality, a panel discussion with community leaders moderated by Dr. Jennifer Savitsky, the chair of OBGYN at Akron General Facilities. Later that day, we also had our monthly technology committee meeting. Just wanted to note that our annual green gives back food drive continues until the end of December. All city buildings and many area businesses are collecting non-perishable food items and personal care items. And then a few upcoming events. If you're interested, tomorrow morning, we are meeting with our faith-based committee to talk about Drug Task Force issues. That's at seven thirty at the lodge at Briar Creek. And then we'll have a senior lunch tomorrow. Just wanted to point out to council and those in attendance that our sheriff does a visitation program of elderly people who just need somebody to check in on them. And twice a year, they have an event where they bring all those, they pick them up and they bring them to an event. They have a barbecue in the summer, and in the winter, they have a little Christmas luncheon. So that'll be held tomorrow at noon at Lakeview Christian Church, if you'd like to attend. And also tomorrow, we're celebrating the opening of Belladonna Floris in Green Plaza on Manslin Road. And then Friday this week, if you're interested, there was a dog park planning meeting, and that will be at eight thirty a.m. in the central administration building. If anybody who's interested in participating in discussion about that facility, that'll come online next spring. And lastly, Green Chamber Holiday Party will be this Friday. It's called the Jingle and Mingle Holiday Party and Toy Drive. That event will be at seven thirty at the lodge at Briar Creek. And if you want additional information, you can reach out to Green Area Chamber of Commerce at greenareachamber.org. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any unfinished business to come before council? Under new business, just a couple of announcements. First of all, our next meeting will be next year. We'll be taking our Christmas recess, so we won't have another meeting between now and the end of the year. Council will be having its organizational meeting on January third at five p.m. here in council chambers. And then our first regular meeting of two thousand and nineteen will take place on the second Tuesday, which is January eighth. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We're adjourned.